A distinguished look.
Call to Kitty Hawk Town Council's order Monday, July the first, 2013, Kitty Hawk Town Hall at 6:00 PM. I want to welcome everybody for coming out tonight. Good to see a group out tonight. Appreciate it. Ask you to join in a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to God, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Any and none? Motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is presentation, Ocean Outfalls.
Good evening. I'm John Delucia from Albemarle Associates. I live in Kitty Hawk. I'm a professional engineer, and I'm here to briefly let you know about the outfall study and answer any questions that you may have. Couple of months ago, you had asked Albemarle Associates to look into the feasibility of gravity outfall-type structures in order to manage the storm water and the flood waters that we experienced between Highway 12 and 158, pretty much from the north end of town or the south end of town. We had taken some information that we had already gathered for the stormwater study that was done in 2012. We did some more reconnaissance. I rode many miles up and down Lindbergh Avenue trying to figure out how we could break these basins into something less than seven different individual outfalls. The town of Kitty Hawk has several miles of oceanfront. I'll put this one up. That pretty much represents our oceanfront areas from the north end of town here to the south end of town here. Those blue areas that you see there, and I'll zoom in on these in just a second, were the individual drainage areas that were identified in the study, the basins, if you will, where storm water will gather and flood. We all know that at certain times, those basins are one, pretty much, except for around Eckers Street, which is a high spot. Looking at the landform of town, knowing the elevations in our low spots, knowing a little bit more about some underground utilities, what we've done is we've looked at four locations within town, and I'm going to show them real quick here. First area would be on the north end of town. This is Lindbergh Avenue here, this is Virginia Dare Trail, right in this area. Looking at this, we've been looking, trying to put one system north of Eckers Street that would gather, collect, and convey storm and flood water from the Eckers Street area. Actually, let me do this a little bit different. Here's outfall figure one. It shows a collection system along Lindbergh Avenue. Main Street is actually a high spot between basins two and three, it was identified. What I tried to do is we tried to look at trying to minimize the number of these outfalls, knowing that they're going to be expensive, and see how we could try to gather various areas. We do know that the Bird Street area tends to fall toward Eckers or toward Farm Street here, and typically doesn't get over Main Street unless we have a very severe flood in that area. This system would serve pretty much all of the north end, north of Eckers Street. Second area that we looked at is we looked at areas four and five, which was up around the Wilkins Street and Historic to the south, and we looked at trying to connect these two bases together. These two bases actually do connect, get connected with each other. We saw that after the November storm. We saw that after Sandy. And this system, too, was planned to serve from basically south of Eckers Street all the way down to Lillian, with the beach access and our new crossover. There's a lot of piping in these. Third outfall we looked at was actually the outfall that was proposed, designed, approved, permitted back many years ago that would serve Kitty Hawk Road and also take care of Beacon and some of the flooding that we've seen on US-158. This is what we're calling outfall number three. To the south, we really don't think that we can connect this system down all the way to the southern end of town, to the side of Gooseander area, due to elevational differences and distances, effectively. This system, while mostly in the right-of-way, has some spurs that run off to the Seadews Condominiums to the south, and also up almost to Lillian Street to the north. Coming north, we will have some challenges trying to... You can see we're coming right through a site plan that's getting ready to come up here. That obviously wouldn't happen that way, but it would be very nice to be able to get a collection system up north through the campground, up near Lillian Street. The fourth area that we identified before was down around beside of Gooseander. This system does not have an easement to the ocean. There are no right-of-ways or public easements that we could utilize to get to the ocean here. We would have to look at obtaining some easements or getting rights through private properties. The good thing about this one is that we probably could come under the bypass with the system and start taking care of the rabbit polymeria also. So that... When you look at these, I'm going to go back to this overall town picture here. When you look at this overall town map, it's notice that there are one system pretty much comes in here, one system comes through here, one system comes here, and one is at the south end of town. So they're fairly evenly distributed between the areas. Now, we looked at the cost of these, and the costs are quite high. Costs range from about 1.6 million to about 2.1 million, depending on the complexity of the piping system and the... what we need to get through to get there. The challenge that I think that we're going to have here is not only some of the underground utilities that we're going to experience trying to put in pipes, but also we have the opportunity with those pipes to do some groundwater management by using perforated pipes and such, so that we don't let that water table when it starts to rise, come up so high. Looking at the costs, half of the cost of these systems is between the beach road and the ocean. We have to come up with some type of a device that will keep ocean water from coming back through the system and flooding us when the tides are high and when... So there'd be some type of structure out near the oceanfront prior to the discharge out to the ocean. When we started looking at the actual cost of the outfall, there was some discussion about looking... These are actually two components. So you have a collection component, how to get the water to a point of discharge or to a point of outfall, and also getting... Then the second part is actually how do we get the water from that point where we've collected the two out to the ocean. NAGS Head recently, last year before the beach nourishment, had extended some of their outfalls. The DOT standards right now are concrete piles, concrete collars, HDPE, heavy-duty piping, seems to hold up under the surf conditions. I can tell you that it's not a bad way to discharge with a gravity system, but there may be some others. We did look into what is going on down in Myrtle Beach, and in that area right now where they're actually taking multiple outfalls, combining them together, trenching a pipe under the ocean out 1,500, 1,800 feet and doing a gravity discharge. Very expensive systems. Those systems are $20, $25 million apiece. However, for the cost of the outfall pipes and the known maintenance of those, I would suggest that we also, if we consider going this route, that we should look at some potential of pumping and putting a series of pump stations, four of them here, and actually taking it offshore, maybe 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet before we discharge it. The Myrtle Beach new outfalls that they have been installing, they did that for water quality purposes, and they have found that the ones that they have already constructed, they are not seeing the same degree of beach notifications and closures and things like that because the discharge is further out away from the recreational zone, if you will. I'm going to stop right there and answer any questions that you may have, because that's pretty much in a nutshell is what we looked at.
Where'd Myrtle Beach get their money? Where'd they get their money?
I have no idea. Although I do know that in the Myrtle Beach area, they had... They would take 10 or 15 or 20 of these outfalls along the stretch and combine them together, and then they were running them out in dual 52-inch pipes or single 74-inch pipes. They were very large pipes that they were actually burying into the bottom of the ocean and outletting in a safe location offshore. Safe, I mean, safe out of the surf zone and out of the zone where sand would move back and forth from 10 to 12.
I have a question about the... Now, this is a continuous system, so that what we had previously asked for when we were doing the original project was just this emergency pumping. This is something that would actually help us keep the water out.
Yes, ma'am.
So that we don't get flooded first, and then...
Well, yes and no. Yes, this should be considered for the expense of these types of devices and this type of a collection system, this should be considered a permanent drainage system that will have to be maintained. When we have overwash, to the extent that we had seen it in some of these previous storms, with a gravity system, when the water is high and the check valve is closed to keep the water from coming back through it, there'll be less likelihood for the water to get out as quickly. When the storm passes, water should go away quicker. Now, utilizing perforated pipes and things like this to try to keep the groundwater at a lower level before that happens would certainly help with the chronic storm flooding that we have from rainfall. However, depending on the intensity and the volume of water that comes over the dunes at any given time, we still would probably expect to see some flooding. Even the outfall number two, which is the largest collection system, we've calculated between 50 and 80 hours in order to drain that basin once the storm has passed. So during the storm, we may still see the conditions that we have seen before in some areas.
Now, I remember reading, I think I recall correctly, that it was a 50-foot out into the ocean for the discharge, and so that's at, what, low tide? High tide? Okay, at low tide. So we don't have the actual... You know, you mentioned Myrtle Beach. They have, at least when I've been there, they have these discharges that are kind of back from the beach and make big ruts in the beach, and they stink, and there's a, you know, a whole lot wrong with that. So would that alone kind of prevent that kind of thing on our beach, or...
It would. DOT typically looks at taking the discharge ends out 50, 60, 70 feet into the atmen, low tide and out. You probably wouldn't see the piping come out of the upper beach, but you would see it starting to come out closer to the ocean. You know, our inverts, our elevations on these pipes, our low areas about six foot where we're collecting it from, so, you know, the bottoms of these pipes are going to be around sea level or lower.
So there would have to be something there to, you know, if it's going to be visible going into the ocean, then, you know, what are the safety implications of that? You know, kids would be boarding and that kind of thing.
I think that plays into the decision of whether you use gravity or whether you try to do a pump system and get the discharge not on the beach, visible at all, and out further into the ocean.
So with a pump system, the discharge would be pumped out. You don't have to run a pipe all the way out there.
We have to run a pipe.
What difference does it make? You were talking about a $25 million system as opposed to a pumping system. I just don't understand.
Myrtle Beach put in a gravity system about 1,500 to 1,800 feet offshore, buried into the bottom of the beach, in the bottom of the profile. And in order for them to collect the individual ones that you saw spilling out on the beach and take them to an offshore location where they would be deemed safer to discharge. I don't think we have the volume, the money, to do something like that. However, when you look at the price, the cost estimate just for the gravity, for the control structure that you have to build to keep the water from coming back into the system from the ocean, and then the pipe from that control structure out to 50 feet out into the ocean, it's about half the cost of these systems. And while we haven't looked into it closely, my guess is, and my opinion is, that a pump station probably could be built for at least as much as the... Or probably not quite as much as those two elements alone.
And get it out farther.
And get it out further. It would be smaller diameter pipes, directionally drilled to a stable location on the bottom with a discharge type. Problem, no matter what system you have, there's always maintenance involved with it. You know, the maintenance of a gravity outfall system in the surf zone where it gets beat up can be high. The maintenance of a pump system and maintaining pumps and controls and electricity and generators and things like that is also... So, you know, weighing what is the most advantageous method of getting it from the collection system back out into the ocean, I still think we should be looked at a little closer.
And how would that be affected by a nourishment project? That pumping?
I'm glad that you asked that, because the outfall structures would certainly be affected by a nourishment project.
The gravity thing.
Because the gravity outfalls, because they would necessarily need to be planned to be built further out for the nourishment project, which is not in these numbers right now. Whereas a directionally drilled, pressurized pipe could be pretty much put at any elevation underneath the beach and probably wouldn't daylight, if you will, under the ocean until it got out 1,000 feet or 1,200 feet. So you would never see that, and it would not affect whatever was done with beach nourishment. Would have to be looked at to make sure that if the discharge is out far enough, it's not to soak up.
John, I've got one question real quick. Would having a beach nourishment project, a replenishment project, pretty well make it so we would not have to have the pressurized system? I mean, wouldn't it alleviate that issue? If you have sand on this side, why would the water be able to come back in again?
That's a hard question to answer because of the storm events. I mean, beach nourishment certainly would or should reduce the number of times that we see overwash, but I don't know that it will prevent us from seeing...
What I was trying, what I was trying in my mind, you know, if you're going to spend $25 million, spend it on beach nourishment. Spend the $3 million on doing these outfalls, and back to $25 million they're spending up in Myrtle Beach, we just...
Oh, I wouldn't, we wouldn't suggest that we did anything like Myrtle Beach.
Well, I know, I'm just giving you a comparison there.
I don't... Okay. We need to clarify a couple things here. The town is basically looking at three different options. One of those has been engineered with a recommendation to do some things, and that's stand pipes and sumps and that sort of thing for pumping up pumps. The other option is looking at beach nourishment, pumping sand on the beach, but if you do that like NAGS Head, they didn't build a dune, all they did was widen the beach. All right, so you still got storm events when that storm surge comes up, and you have rainfall that because everything between the highways is lower than either side, the ocean side or the west side, you still have that issue of flooding. So an outfall serves a purpose even with beach nourishment. Let's make sure we're clear on that. Now, I'm going to ask you to pull up outfall number three, and I have a question for John and then for Willie before I proceed further with the recommendation. John, we are in process of looking at a municipal service district hearing or something for the fall. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So that will pursue the beach nourishment aspect of it to give us an idea whether people, A, want to spend the money for it, which is going to be very expensive.
That's right.
We do have, we would have to incur debt, we would have to incur a cost share, and then ask for the county for a bunch of money.
That's right. That's correct.
But we're pursuing that, and that will go further down the line in the fall. Willie, now your question. During Superstorm Sandy, we had to pump, and we've actually pumped since then, too, one time. We put a sump in at Bird Street, right?
Correct.
How did that work? With no stand pipes or anything, how did the sump work?
Once the water was down enough to where we could actually get the pump in there.
Right.
It worked great.
All right. If we pursued the already engineered aspect of putting a stand pipe and sump system in, say let's put one of them in just to see how well it would work and stand up, where best after Superstorm Sandy would that go?
The deepest area we had where we were pumping was the Hawk Street area, which encompassed Wilkins down towards Balchon, and usually it doesn't go much south of Hawks, but it's definitely the deepest area.
Okay, and that would have been hard to get to if you put just a sump in, too. You couldn't have got to it.
Correct.
With a stand pipe that stood up against all the gravel and all the overwash that came over, if a stand pipe had been put in there in accordance with the engineered plans that Albemarle's presented to us, would that have stood the storm?
They'd have been covered up, I think. I think the tops of the place would have been covered up at first. We could have uncovered them, but who knows when the state came in and cleaned the road how many of them they would have hit.
So we'd still have a problem?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So if we want to pursue at least one of those, then Hawk Street would be the place to do it.
More than likely, yes, sir.
All right.
That's the largest volume of water.
All right. Thank you. Now, my fellow council, I have a recommendation. Would you go to three, please? I think we're pursuing the beach nourishment. That's on track. I think we ought to look at a stand pipe system as already engineered in Hawk Street just to see how that would work, and I think we should direct the manager to pursue this outfall with NC DOT, because NC DOT is heavily invested in that, and see if they can come up with some money somehow to help us do this and see where we go with that. So we're moving in three directions by doing that. And then we'll come back if NC DOT kisses it off, we're done. If they say, yeah, we should be able to help you, because that affects 12 and it affects 158, not just from rainwater, but we now know we flooded 158 in two or three different storms for weeks at a time. So NC DOT has a real vested interest in this set.
That's right.
And if they're going to help us, this is the place to do it. That'll give us three tracks of where we can do something while we don't have any money to do any of it.
I agree with him. You agree with that?
Yeah. One question, you know, you're talking about the stand pipe that would be covered up if they put, or possibly covered up. And a reason for going under NC 12 was to stop from having to close NC 12.
Correct.
Well, if we put the stand pipe for the trial basis, stopped it before you got to NC 12, so you could set up at NC 12 and pump across it and not have to worry about the ocean tearing it up. Just as a thought, we could always then just, you know, if we want to later, go under NC 12, and hopefully DOT would put pipes under NC 12. I believe that would be to their advantage, but we could do it without going under NC 12 and being the ocean probably tarried up before we got a chance to use it. Would that not be a better possibility to try to start with?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Willie, would that be better, in your opinion, to try that first?
We couldn't have got to NC 12 anyway until it cleared it all. That stuff acts like quicksand when it gets up there like that.
In the Hawk Street area, near the intersection of 12, there is an area where we could stub it up on the west side of the road without having to come in. On that side, the shoulder is fairly narrow on the ocean side of Hawk Street. That would possibly benefit us.
Instead of going under NC 12, because we're still going, at this point, we're still going to be closing NC 12 to pump anyway, other places.
Yes, sir.
But that would give us an idea of how the sumps worked.
That's fine.
And then, because our concern was after the storm was if we had them on the west, on the east side of NC 12, we may have gone tore up to start with.
Well, I think it would have been, and that's why I asked the question.
So if we did that, then all we'd ever have to do is be go under NC 12 and put them over there. If we did beach nourishment, then we could go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good to me. So you have a sense of direction?
Yes, sir, I certainly do.
Council has consensus?
I agree with it.
Okay.
And the one at Kitty Hawk Road, the outfall, DOT had already one time was going to put that in. So if they can get permits, I believe we can work them to help do that or to do it.
Go ahead. John, you had a follow-on? You going to tell me why none of this works?
No, I think it would work fine. I just, I'd like to reserve the right to look at what side of the road might be best. I understand your concern about it being tore up, but there's some other considerations that I had given to that system that might be advantageous to have them.
Okay. John, the manager is... We'll listen to you, I'm certain, and bring us whatever we need to know.
Yes, sir.
John, I've got one more question. Didn't, when we had, during Isabel, didn't DOT get along the east side of Highway 12 and put that steel ball kit right there by Hawk Street? Remember, because we lost the whole...
They did. They made them remove it.
They did, but they took it out. They put sandbags back in some of those areas.
Camma made them remove the steel pollens after they put them down.
Yeah, I know we ran into some of the sandbags around Lillian Street.
Because we wouldn't have lost the road this time if it'd been there.
That's right.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. But that was a dumb thing to do, not make them remove the pollens. That was crazy.
Oh, that went up, that went up pretty high, too. Yeah.
That's your government at work.
That's right.
Okay. Next is public comment. Have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, Joe Shipley.
Good evening to y'all. I'd like to take just a second and talk to you about a subject that you're going to be dealing with a little bit later, which would be item 9A. All of us here probably have visited Hurricane Most Restaurant at one time or another, and we see how incredible that parking can be. I'm there a couple times a week myself, and along with people who are parking to go to the beach, it's incredible. And it's not just incredible, it's dangerous. We have people coming in at funny little angles, right up to the edge of the street. People are driving by. I've seen numerous near accidents from people backing out trying to turn in, and I think that that should be something that is sincerely considered when you discuss their application for that improved parking that they want.
Anybody else?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody else signed up? Next is consent agenda.
Motion to approve, that's promulgated.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Items removed from the consent agenda, we don't have any of those. Next is public hearings. We have two of those, and motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Joe, if you want to give us a rundown on the zoning amendment. He, they?
Thank you, Mayor Perry, members of council, and members of the public in attendance. What we have before us for this first item is a zoning amendment, or a rezoning proposal to rezone a portion of the property at 108 West Ciburn Drive from Beach Residential, BR2, to Beach Commercial, BC1. I'd like to start with just taking a quick look at the subject property here. What, what we've done is just copy a portion of the site plan. The important thing I wanted to point out right here is this red line, this dash line running right down through the property there. What you'll see is that the, it, it's referred to by Dare County as a single parcel, but it, it's actually, it's given one property number there, but it's actually two separate parcels. The boundary line between those parcels is over here, and what you see here is the zoning line, so the, this area over here to the east that contains the, the first building that you reach, the Eastern Most Building, is within the commercial zone. But then that property is split zoned, so this is BC1 on this side of the line. Everything over here, including the, just say the remaining third of that property, and then the entirety of the second tract that contains the other building on the property, is Zone Beach Residential 2. What the applicant is requesting is that the entire property, the, the zoning of the entire property be amended to BC2, so that that encompassed the whole thing. Property is about an acre and a half in size. As I pointed out, there are two buildings on the property. First one dates from 1982, second one from 1984. Both were built in association with a, a daycare center that operated on that property until 2011, so for a total of about 29 years. Property has been vacant since that time, and has been purchased by a, a new owner recently. The property, you can just see it on the bottom of this plan here, you can see Ciburn Drive right here, the little, there's actually, it's a cul-de-sac. That's how the property gains access. There is only frontage on Ciburn Drive at this point in time. Ciburn is a town-maintained street. This is how the zoning lays out on the, the zoning map, just looking at this, and I'll pull this up a little closer. The subject property is the one highlighted in the red there, but you can see the sort of pinkish, doesn't show up real well on this, but it's more of a pinkish reddish color here, is Zone Beach Commercial 1, all along the highway there. What you have here, in front of you, you have, there's Cito's, and then Kitty Hawk Carpet and Furnishings located along the highway, directly abutting these properties. So those are all in this area here, in the commercial zone. Looking at the other areas along Ciburn here, you have the Dare County Water Tank located in, in this area here, in the commercial zone, right there. Across J-Jack, just for reference, would be Henry's Restaurant there. So you can see how the subject property goes in here. You have a large undeveloped parcel right here in this BR2 zone, that extends well up G-Jack, and then you have a couple other properties that abut the subject property. One of them has frontage only on Tate Way, it contains a, a large duplex building, everything on this property is oriented toward Tate Way, but it does extend all the way south to touch the subject property. The other property that abuts, as you can see in here, in this small residential subdivision, is a single-family residence located on this property here in the bend of the road and of Sunrise View, and that abuts the, the corner, the northwest corner of the property here. So that, just to give you an idea of what else is, what else is around there. In the past, almost exactly a year ago to the day, there was an application that the, the council heard for a, it, it did involve a, a similar rezoning request to what you're hearing tonight. However, the council members may recall that, that request was associated with two other applications, all of which, the bottom line related to the establishment of a dog grooming and boarding facility on the property. The council had some concerns with that proposed use, and at that meeting on July 2nd of last year, the council did vote to deny the proposed rezoning. At this point, the, again, we do have a, a different owner, but we also have a, you know, it's really a different type of proposal for the council to consider. The applicant, in, at least in the, for the time being, is looking at the possibility of locating a, they're looking at a T-shirt facility, you know, kind of manufacturing wholesale would be the focus of it, in the front building, in the portion that is zoned commercially, at least in a portion of that building. They could not use the whole building, because there's not enough commercial property to accommodate that. The rear building, the applicant is looking for, at the, the time being, converting that into a, for a residential use, and that is in the residential zone. So both of those, at least the short-term uses that are proposed, are consistent with the current zoning. However, the applicant has expressed an interest in having the flexibility to use these buildings, which were built and designed as commercial buildings, for commercial purposes in the future. And the one thing in just evaluating the layout of the property and how it functions, the one thing I, I do want to point out on here is, again, you see the commercial line in red running through the property. While the front building is entirely within that commercial zone, the issue that's faced by anybody looking at really using that building for that, a commercial purpose, is that you don't have enough remaining property to accommodate something like just parking spaces. So it really doesn't function in, in a manner that anybody could operate a, a business using that entire building. Now, what's, with what's being proposed, they can, they can make that work, but to use the whole building, there's just almost no way, unless it was a use that just didn't have any, or had very minimal parking requirements. The, and then looking at the, the back, you know, this building, again, was built for a commercial purpose, operated, it was a non-conforming use, but grandfathered, and, you know, but now it would not be able to use commercial, commercial purposes under the present zoning at all, under that. So did want to just point out the challenge faced by the owner in looking at the, at these properties in the future. The town's adopted Kama Land Use Plan, does designate this property as a commercial shopping and working area. So the proposed request is, is consistent with that designation in, on the future land use map. And finally, just wanted to mention then, that on their meeting on May 16th, the planning board did evaluate this proposal and voted unanimously to recommend approval to rezone the remaining portion of 108 West Ciburn Drive from BR2 to BC1. And I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions of the council members at this time.
Yeah, I do. A point of, perhaps clarification. In this particular request for rezoning, every adjacent property owner has submitted a letter of approval. Is that what I read in my packet?
I don't believe that's the case. You do have letters of support from, here, I'll pull out the other map to point out who, who we have. You do have a letter from the owner of the De Loach property here, that adjoins two sides, the west and south side of the property. The other, the other letters you have in the packet are from businesses that are in very close proximity to this, but none, none of those directly abut this property.
Okay.
So we don't have letters from either of the residential or the commercial uses that, but you do have one from Henry's, you have one from, from Bissell Engineering, and you have one from Outer Banks Keys, which are all in close proximity.
And at the last request for rezoning, as I recall, nobody from Kitty Hawk, the Village of Kitty Hawk, spoke. We did have people across the Kill Devil Hills line that spoke in opposition of that particular rezoning, but nobody from Kitty Hawk did. This time, we have people from Kitty Hawk and Kill Devil Hills in favor, support of this rezoning.
The, the letters, right, that you have are from?
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. All right, thank you.
Joe, I, did I just hear you say that the land use, the future land use plan shows this area as developed commercial? Because there are some comments in the previous issue that we had with this property, that it was, it was not, that the future land use plan stated that it was for residential development. Said the plan generally encourages, rezoning application was inconsistent with the stated goals, policies, and intent of the land use plan, and it said that the plan generally encourages the character of low to medium density. So it wasn't the land use map, it was just some of the actual, like the generic type statements that are in the land use plan, not with the map.
That's, that's correct, yeah. The, the map has always shown this very specifically, it actually, just like this property juts out like this, that's very, it's very clearly shown on the map that it juts out and follows this boundary in the future land use map. But the, when the council evaluated and was coming to a decision, you did look at some of the other general statements in the plan, and opted not to approve it at that time.
Yeah. Now, the, my recollection of the folks from Kill Devil Hills who lived in the residential area is that they didn't really object to a commercial zoning, they were objecting to the dog use, because of the noise and some of the other things. And in fact, well, but, but all I'm saying is, I know I, I remember asking specifically, well, what do you think about the zoning? And I'm not sure I got a, I'm not sure I got a straight answer on that, but I do recall that every, just about everything they said about it was directed, probably misdirected, because we were discussing the zoning, but it was directed at the use, not at the zoning itself.
Right.
And I did ask for clarification from one of the people that spoke, and I don't know that, I think that the answer also objected to the use, rather than the zoning.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
No any question? I have nothing.
Okay, we'll go ask, do we have anybody signed up to speak at this portion of public hearing land?
No, no one's signed up.
Does anyone wish to speak to this portion of public hearing?
I'm Charlotte Walker, and we own the, and this is my son, Joseph, and we own the property now, and I promise y'all, I will not have a dog park over there. I can promise you that, for sure. But it would be, it would help us clarify a lot of things if it could all be zoned, one, one zone. And if, if I can answer any questions for anybody, I would be happy to.
I don't have any.
I don't have any, no. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Let the record show that no one else came forward, and Joe, I guess we might as well take up the second one, too, while we're here.
Mayor Perry, the second item we have is a proposal to rezone a property at 926 West Kitty Hawk Road from Village Residential to Village Commercial, BC2. In this case, what we have, again, outlined in the red on this property here, you can see it's a property almost 2.9 acres in size. Again, presently zoned Village Residential, which shows up as yellow on the map you see before you. But you can, you can note on here, you'll see a, a variety of different districts in this area of the village, and I'd like to just talk a little bit about, about what surrounds this, because the context of this property is, I think, something that the planning board certainly had a lot of discussion about in making their recommendation. Property is presently undeveloped, I mean, here, it goes back in, it is surrounded, and I'll use this little hand thing as a pointer here, it's really surrounded on three sides, al- almost entirely by water. You've got a, you know, some creeks that, you know, come down here and run down, and it ends up going under the road, and across the street there, you have another waterway marshed over on this side. So the property actually only has a fairly minimal frontage on Kitty Hawk Road, and then goes back in where it's surrounded here, and, you know, really, the, the area that I've highlighted in red on this is an area where you'll find mature landscaping, almost the entire perimeter of this property is trees and underbrush and all of that, so it's almost like it has a built-in buffer, in, in a manner of speaking. The, the main part of the property is cleared, in the central part. So looking around it, you have a variety of things here. Across, over here, you have Mr. Shipley's property, you do have a residential property over here, that gains access on the, the, the road that comes in through Dare County's Park, and then comes to his property here. So that abuts the corner. This larger property here in the yellow is the, the Dare County Park, Kitty Hawk Park. The dog park is the area, as well as an undeveloped area, that, that abut this property would include the area of the dog park, as well as some undeveloped property on the park, on the county's property. Joining the property on the other side over here in a Village Commercial 3, which is our most intense commercial district in the village, this is all the, the RPC Construction Complex, so you have a, you know, a great variety of industrial, quasi-industrial type uses located on that property. You see, you also have a little thinner property up here that contains the northeast marine construction business, that's owned Village Commercial 2. You'll notice that Village Commercial 2 District also extends directly across Kitty Hawk Road, and includes properties like such as Stormont Construction, Cozy Kitchen, Cabinet Shop, and all that, back in, across, directly across Kitty Hawk Road from the subject property. We do have another property zoned residentially here that contains a store, barn-like storage building on this property here, but not a, not a residence. From the, the letter submitted by the applicant, he has stated his intent is to construct a, a barn on this property and operate his landscaping business. He would use this property as the, the base for that business. Looking at the future land use map in the town's land use plan for this property, in this case, the map does designate the, the property as a lower density, lower-density residential area. What I do want to point out though is that as the planning board evaluated that recommendation from the plan, they did note that there were several other policies and objectives in the plan, and they felt that the amendment was consistent with those objectives and intent of the town's adopted land use plan, although the map did show a different zone. As part of its recommendation, on May 16th, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval to the town council of the proposal to rezone this property at 926 West Kitty Hawk Road from Village Residential, VR1, to Village Commercial, BC2. And I'd be glad to answer- And I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council members might have.
Any questions?
I don't know.
Okay. Lynn, has anybody signed up to speak to this portion of public hearing?
Yes, sir. Jim Shipley?
Yeah, as you can see from that map, one corner of my property touches his. And a while back, I just happened to be driving down the road, and I counted out of six adjacent pieces of property, four of them were businesses. And I didn't even look any further than that. But I certainly don't have an objection, and, uh, I couldn't believe that that property actually had any problem not to be, uh, have that zoning amendment gone. It's a perfect place to do it. As a person, he's a hard-working, upstanding young man, and I should think that he needs a place to put his equipment. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Dave Stormont?
Good afternoon. I, I own the property directly across the street from, uh, 926, I own 929 and 931, and I have absolutely no objection to this amendment proposal.
Anybody else?
Yes. Rod Carey?
Counsel, thank you for your time. I'm Mark Perry's, uh, father, and I just want to very briefly speak in favor of, uh, the request to rezone it, simply because all the uses around him are non-residential. It's really not the highest and best use of that piece of land to have it residential. And I can't imagine anything that would be, uh, done on the property that could be, uh, bring negative impacts to any of the neighbors or the town. So, I'd ask for your support on it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Wade Tillit?
Hello, my name is Wade Tillit, uh, born and raised native of Kitty Hawk, uh, grandson of Brad. Um, I'd like to see this, uh, also be commercialized, uh, like everybody's been saying, surrounded by swamps, marshes, commercial property. Uh, and, uh, the fella that's doing it is a really good-hearted guy. I think he'd respect any wishes anybody would like him to do.
Anybody else?
Dylan Tillit?
My name's Dylan Tillit, relative to grandson of Brad as well. Um, Mark's a great guy, and all my points have been proven as well already previously. But, um, I like to stress the fact that there's no buffers, I mean, there's a ton of buffer along Kitty Hawk Road, um, and with the surrounding commercial, um, I don't see why this place wasn't commercial to begin with. Um, in favor of turning it commercial.
Anybody else, Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else wish to speak to this portion of the public hearing? Come on, Cliff.
My name's Cliff Neal, I'm also a, I, I live next door to Dave Stormont, which is also across the street from Mark Perry. And I think it's wonderful that you would rezone it, uh, if that be your decision. Uh, it complements, I think, that area, and having a landscaping thing right across the street, I won't have to go so far for most. I don't know what they said about Mark, some of it might be true. But I tell you what, the considerations this council has always paid to the people that work hard and want to make something of their lives right here in the village, it's a wonderful place to live and do that. And I've been rewarded by the decisions of this council on many occasions, and I certainly hope they'll, and I think they will, uh, go according to the wishes of Mark Perry, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm next door neighbor to Cliff. I'm Kathy Monroe, I am next door neighbor to Cliff, so, uh, you know, Mark, um, known him since he was really little, and, um, I, I just feel like, uh, having a, a landscaping business would be an asset, plus I'm a plant freak.
Anybody else? Let the record show that no one else came forward, and the motion go into regular session.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Go back to eight B. What's the council desire to do here?
You mean eight A.
Eight A, yeah, whoa, okay.
I'm going to make a motion. Um, I move to grant approval of the application of rezoning the remaining portion of the property at 108 West Seaborn Drive from beach residential, B R two, to beach commercial, B R one, or B C one. Town council finds the rezoning, the subject property, is consistent with the property's designation on a commercial shopping and working area on the future land use plan, Matt, and Kitty Hawk's adopted land use plan.
Second.
Okay, any new discussion?
Uh, the only question I have for the attorney is, do we need to add these, uh, following reasons, uh, to the motion?
You can add any or all of them.
Would you mind, would you mind if we added these to the?
No problem.
All right. You want me to read it? You go ahead and read them. There, there is one that I want to make sure we add, and that is, "An adjacent property owner and nearby businesses have stated no objections to the rezoning. At the last requested rezoning, there were Kill Devil Hills residents that objected."
Well, since I was straining with my eyes to read what I did, you can read those, 'cause my eyes are, glasses on me.
All right, and in addition to that, "The proposed rezoning of the subject property is consistent with the property's designation as a commercial shopping and working area in Kitty Hawk's adopted land use plan. The subject property abuts several properties that are zoned commercially and contain active commercial uses. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the historical use of the property as it was used as a daycare center for 29 years. The commercial use of the subject property predates any of the surrounding residential development. With two large commercial buildings on site, the subject property has limited potential to be redeveloped for the type of residential uses permitted in the B R two zoning district, and continued commercial use or commercial redevelopment of the subject property would benefit the tax base of the town."
And the first thing you read?
And the first thing I read, yes.
Okay, and you set that motion, right?
I did.
And I'll second it.
All right.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, next is heat B.
Well, I'll make a motion on this one. I move to grant approval of the application to rezone the property at 926 West Kitty Hawk Road from village residential one to the village res- commercial two. Although inconsistent with the future land use map in Kitty Hawk's adopted land use plan, town council finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with some of the stated objectives and intent of the plan. And I'll add some of these, uh, comments as, uh, although inconsistent with the future land use map in Kitty Hawk's adopted land use plan, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the intent of the plan to encourage future commercial development in existing commercial areas. The subject property adjoins several other properties that are zoned commercially and contain more intensive commercial uses. Due to the close proximity of intense commercial uses, the subject property has limited potential to be developed for the type of residential uses permitted in the V R one zoning district. The subject property seems better suited for commercial rather than residential development. Due to its relatively secluded location and existing trees and vegetation around the edges of the property, commercial development of the subject property would not have significant impact on the surrounding properties."
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
I, I just want to add one comment. This property has more than just buffer trees. It, it almost is a moat, except for the driveway.
Yeah.
Because it's ditched all the way around the thing, and, uh, for, folks, this is kind of an example of how Kitty Hawk has hodgepodge and grown over the years, from a hundred years ago, to, you know, a spot here was rezoned to do something, and then just got left out. So, we're just kind of completing the circle, but it's taken a hundred or so years to get that.
Well, when this came up, I was amazed it wasn't already zoned that way, because it didn't affect Kitty Hawk Road, it just affected, you know, the property in front of it, but alre- already commercial. I thought it was, but after research, I found out it wasn't, so I certainly support it. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is number nine, site plan review. Uh, part of this thing, Charlotte, part of this thing is you have to stay until the meeting's over.
She'd known that, she might have withdrawn at the planning board. Who knows?
Okay, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Um, the proposal we have before you now is for a site plan review, and this is a proposed project to expand the existing parking area at Hurricane Mo's at 120 East Kitty Hawk Road. The proposed expansion would add 25 new paved parking spaces on newly acquired property to the north of the existing parking area at the restaurant. The proposed parking area, and I'll point it out, let me even blow this up a little bit more, just so we can see it a little better. This is the existing restaurant building, this is the existing parking area here to the west of that, and then this is the new section right here, proposed. It consists of a 22-foot-wide drive aisle, access drive going in with a row of parking on either side of that area, and then a turnaround area at the end. Um, there is no expansion of the existing business or, or the buildings, um, associated with this project, it's purely to expand the amount of parking on site. Um, as part of the, this project, um, the owners, really their, their initial goal, from what I understand, talking with the, the owner, was really, um, seeking some way to improve their, their septic system. But as they looked at the opportunities to do that, um, they were able to complete a property swap with the Humphreys property, the one that contains, um, Deco by the Shore and that property up at the corner of Kitty Hawk Road and Highway 158. And they, what they acquired was a piece at the rear of the property, and they traded off a triangle that gave the other property greater road frontage on Kitty Hawk Road. When acquiring this, this is nearly, nearly two-thirds of an acre in this portion that was acquired, the, the dash lines here on the plan are the, the proposed new septic system. So, this would be a brand-new system, the, and then the parking area, they, but they were able to fit in a sizable parking addition. So, they're really, you know, looking at, really dealing with two existing situations and improving those as part of this project. The other aspect that you'll see right here, part of the additional property would include the stormwater improvements associated, that, that would be required for the new parking area. The property now, with its, with the new acquisition, is about a little over 1.2 acres in size. It is all zoned beach commercial one, as is all of the property directly around it. So, all of the property, even the ones that are, um, particularly over here to the east, that is, um, that contains some residential uses, there's several residences on this property, um, that is zoned beach commercial one still, even though it's used residentially. Um, the restaurant presently is, uh, a- almost 3,200 square feet in size. The one thing, um, I do want to point out before I get too far and forget, um, for the council members who did go out and visit the site or have driven by and looked at it, you will note that there is active work going on, on, on this property, that, that is not the applicant jumping the gun. I did want to point this out, so you didn't hold that against them. Um, they do have, the applicant did obtain an erosion and sediment control permit to begin installation of the septic system, which is a, a very high priority project for them. If the council decides to approve the, the additional parking, that would also be a part of that, the grading for that would be included in that permit. But I just wanted you to be aware of that, so you didn't, didn't hold that against the applicant there. Okay. Um, the subject property, and I'll flip back out a little bit here, in this area up front presently contains 26 parking spaces. Um, there is a requirement, with the size of the existing building here, there, they would be required to have 32 parking spaces, if this was a, you know, brand-new facility under today's standards. So, they are, they, they've been non-conforming, they don't have enough parking to meet the town's minimum requirements presently. Um, with this proposal, it would add 25 spaces, they would also lose three parking spaces in this area here where the markers, in order to provide the access into the new parking area. So, once this project is completed, should it be approved, there would be a total of 48 parking spaces on site. So, that would bring the property well into compliance with the, the minimum standards. Um, did want to point out just quickly that there, there are two, um, ADA handicapped accessible spaces located right near the entrance, that with the additional amount of parking, it would not be enough to kick in a requirement for a third space, so the two spaces would still be compliant. So, that, they've addressed that issue. The main thing that the, the, um, planning board had some discussion about, as well as the, the engineer, the consulting engineer working on behalf of the town, and the engineer for the project, coastal engineering, um, has to do with stormwater management. The requirement in the town's ordinance is that with this creation of all this, this new impervious surface for these 25 parking spaces, is that they have to address all of the new stormwater runoff that's created by those spaces. They, they do not have to address all of the stormwater requirements for this whole basin where we have flooding from time to time. They, they do not have to address the, any existing stormwater, I, I don't believe there's really any stormwater management built into this property presently. Um, they don't, but they're not required to address that, they're only required to address this new addition and accommodating that. So, I want to be clear up front on that. Um, as you, if you read through your staff report, the one thing you'll notice, there's been a little bit of back and forth here with the, the town's engineer making comments, the applicant submitting a revision to address those, and the most recent iteration of that is on the, the 27th, so that was just, you know, the, toward the end of last week, the town did receive a revised copy of the site plan, that is the plan that you have before you. And, um, but there wasn't enough time to receive the review comments from our consulting engineer with Anlof Engineering in time to put that in your packet, so I did put a letter in, in front of you this evening before the meeting that has the revised comments. The, the key thing I, I just want to mention is that, um, you know, if you've read over that letter, it, it does appear that our consulting engineer agrees that the revised plan addresses all of his previous comments where he found several factors to be, to be not in compliance with the town's stormwater management regulations, and he has now changed his comments to say that it is in compliance, or compliance with the intent, I believe was one, the comment on one of them. The, the big, the change that was made was simply, um, they, the, the most significant change was bringing up the bottom of this stormwater basin. Um, before, it was down only six inches above the water table. The engineer, coastal engineering, was able to redesign this basin in a manner where they were able to bring that up to 12 inches, which then meets the minimum requirements for this area, um, of the state and the town's ordinance for that. So, that was really the key to this redesign and meeting that. And then the applicant did add a couple of other notes on the plan to address the other concerns. So, I, I did want to just bring that to the council's attention, 'cause that is a change from what's in your staff report. Um, the planning board did review this application at their meeting. The planning board did review this application at their meeting on June 13th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this site plan for the expansion of the parking area at Hurricane Mo's. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council members have.
Yep. Any question? Okay.
I move to grant approval of this site plan for the expansion of the parking area for Hurricane Mo's Restaurant at 120 East Kitty Hawk Road.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Well, I can see it's just well-needed.
Yep.
All those in favor?
I'm glad you explained that he wasn't jumping the gun, because I did ride by.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that too.
I got a call about it.
Yeah, you did.
Well, I figured they, they had the permission to do that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next final subdivision, 9B.
Okay, thank you again, Mayor Perry. What we have before us tonight on this application is a, an application for a final approval of a final subdivision plat that proposes to divide an existing 6.14-acre property on the northern side of Emmeline Lane into three lots. As part of the subdivision, do want to point out, there are no, there are no utility improvements that are necessary as part of this. That, that is why you're seeing this as a final plat, because there's really no need to do a preliminary plat. The purpose of the preliminary plat is to approve a design, and then the applicant installs all of the improvements. Well, in this case, there are no improvements to install, so that's why we are bringing it forward to you as a final plat. In that vein, the, the property is zoned village commercial, VC2, which does allow single-family residential development. But also important to point out that it does permit a variety of other types of commercial activities should the owners look to do that in the future. The property does presently contain a, a single-family residence. You'll see it on the plat here on Lot 3. Residents in the improved, you know, driveway and other similar improvements, parking area located in this area. Those are accessed by a driveway that comes in off of Emmeline Lane, all the way down on this end of the property on the easternmost part, and winds all the way up and around back to here. One of the things you'll note, and unfortunately, the plat's a little too large to capture the whole thing on the, the camera here, but you have a lot of high ground in this area over here. So, really, as you're looking at the, the areas where someone would be likely to build a residence on any of these properties, it's more than likely going to be back in this area. So, what the, the applicant, not, not only are they, they not seeking to, or not needing to do any improvements to the road for, for frontage, but they're actually, the concept they're looking at is for all of these properties to have an easement that is shown on the plat here, to use the existing driveway, so there, there wouldn't even be an additional curb cut in this case. And, and you can see how the concept would probably work quite well, because you see there's an extensive amount of wetlands here. And even in order for somebody to, to cut a new driveway in would require an enormous amount of expense and significant permitting costs and time with the Army Corps of Engineers. So, more than likely, they would be glad to, to work within this easement to gain their access back to the high ground back here. Three properties, Lot 1 is 2.86 acres, Lot 2 is 2.22, Lot 3 is just a shade under an acre, .96 acres. You'll notice that those figures don't match the exact figures on the, the plat. That is because, according to the town's ordinance, we do factor out any camma wetlands. Those are not counted toward the, the lot area. As I mentioned, there are, so there are a few little camma wetlands on the, the sides of a couple of the lots here, on lots 1 and 2, where it reduces that. But you'll notice a majority of the, the wetlands, again, the whole property's 6.14 acres, 4.6 of those are core wetlands. So, a vast majority of these, two, two-thirds or three-quarters of the property are wetlands. But the, the applicant in designing this did a, a good job of actually incorporating enough area within each property that even if we didn't count the wetlands at all, they, each lot still has over 16,000 square feet of high ground in, in, in one area. So, in other words, these are larger than your typical building lot would be anywhere else in town, even excluding all the wetlands, where you, you usually see a minimum 15,000 square foot. The only quirky thing I did want to point out, does occur on Lot 2. Otherwise, the lots meet all of the, the town's standards. On Lot 2, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that this one doesn't meet, but on Lot 2, you have a situation where you have a little over 75 feet at the front of the lot along Emmeline Lane. That's carried back nearly 400 feet, and then, as it bends to the west, it narrows to a width of 50 feet for this stretch. But then, as you get into the buildable area just off the screen here, it widens again to a width of actually over 150 feet in the area where you would see the building. So, you do have a, a good wide area that meets the minimum width at the front, but then it does narrow to 50 feet, but then it widens again to an even larger amount in the building area. Just want to point out that if and when, if these lots are approved and are looking at development, they, they would each need to obtain a septic permit from their county environmental health department. There is an existing water line on Emmeline Lane that could be tapped into to run back to each of these. And there are already overhead electrical lines in place to the existing residents that could certainly be easily tapped into there for, by Dominion for the electrical service. I mentioned the easement for the, the drive. It's 45 feet in width, so that it encompasses the drive all the way down the eastern boundary. And then, as it goes to the north, that narrows to 30 feet, and then narrows to 20 feet as it crosses over Lot 2 and connects to Lot 3 in this area. But it does encompass all of the existing drive. There is also a stated utility easement in the notes on the plat. There's a utility easement, 10 feet in width on the front of the properties along Emmeline, and 5 feet in width on each side property line for these lots. So, there are accommodations that were made for that and for future, if, if needed, to have those easements in place for utilities. Planning Board reviewed this plat at its meeting on June 13th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the final plat. There were three comments that the board made about things that they would like to see corrected on the plat. And the applicant did submit a revised plat on June the 17th that had all of those points addressed in it. So, staff is comfortable that all of the board's comments have been addressed by this revised plat. And that's all I've got for you, and be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. You first?
No, I don't have.
Okay. The easement road is a private road. And privately maintained.
That's correct.
And?
And it's, we don't, we don't even consider it a road. It's actually, it's a driveway.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking about in the future, would the town have to take that over if requested, because this is now a three-part subdivision?
No, sir. It, it does not, first of all, it doesn't comply with any town standards. What, what we do with, when we're looking at a subdivision is we, we require that each lot have a, an appropriate amount of width and frontage that should a person wish to develop their own driveway, that they have that off of a, a road of proper width and frontage. That is Emmeline Lane. How the owners actually choose to gain access to their property, they can do that any way they want. If some, if two properties want to share access with a common drive on the boundary, they can do that. If they want to gain access, some backway coming in through the other way, they can, they're welcome to do that. There could be any other, other legal means for them to gain access. In this case, they're using this driveway, but it's not a road that the town would, would have to accept.
Okay. That, that's where I was going with that. I just wanted to make sure the town doesn't have to accept it. I mean, it's been there and it's well-maintained, but sometimes ownership changes and that can change too. I don't have any other questions.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the final plat for Madeline Sin House LLC subdivision, dividing existing 6.14-acre property on Emmeline Lane into three lots.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is 9C, call for a public hearing, conditional use permit.
All right. I'll make that motion. I move to set a public hearing at the town council meeting on August 5th, 2013, to consider a conditional use permit application to convert the existing office storage space on the second floor of the building at 4,009 North Groatan Highway to a two-bedroom apartment.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Permit fee waiver. Is this because of timeline it given out on the permit fee? Is that for the stormwater?
Just, this is a request from an owner. Yeah, the town had, after each of our recent storms with Irene and Sandy, the town had, the council adopted nine-month periods after each of those where we waived permit fees for, you know, for projects related to dealing with damage after the storm.
And this is just extended?
This is well beyond, yeah, this, this is actually going all the way back to Irene. And in this case, obviously, we don't have that authority to just, as a staff, to waive a fee. But if the council chooses to do so, they're, that's what the request is about.
We know it was damaged then, so, I mean.
That's correct. Yeah, that, that is correct. We can confirm that for you.
And they've actually since, I didn't realize they had demolished that.
Me either. I just heard about it.
I was surprised. But they're, the owners are, are the original son and his two sons, which makes him pretty old, because they're all three retired. So, okay. All right. I move to waive the permit fees associated with the construction of a new residence at 1,300 West Kitty Hawk Road to replace the previous residence that was damaged during Hurricane Irene and later demolished.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New business appointments to boards and committees? Okay, we have three vacancies, two, two applications, so.
I, I can do the board of adjustments if you're waiting.
Go for it.
I'd like to, I'd like to nominate David Morton for the vacancy on the board of adjustments for a three-year term that expires June 2016.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we have one.
And I'll just make a comment about the recreation committee. We have been trying to find a, a volunteer for the recreation committee. So far, we, no one has really responded to the recent advertisements. And Mr. Morton, before the board of adjustment came up, looked like he was going to fill the vacancy, but he was really much, kind of an ideal candidate for the board of adjustments. So, so we're kind of back to the drawing board with the recreation committee. So, if anybody wants to volunteer or knows somebody who would like to volunteer, please call.
Got his hand up.
Would you like to be a volunteer? On the, on the, on the recreation committee, Tom?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Well, he raised his hand, do it again.
Yeah. Now, now, tonight, tonight.
We're hurting. If you volunteer, you're it.
If you volunteer and come in tomorrow, we'll appoint you tonight, right?
Yeah, we're going to appoint him tonight. Fill out application tomorrow.
Oh, I don't know. Tom, what's your last name?
Hefner.
Hefner.
N-E-R. Okay, and you'll come in and fill out the application? All right then, this is great. I nominate Tom Hefner for the vacancy on the recreation committee to fill a term that will end in June 2014.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And if anybody wants to be a line cook at Sugar Creek, I'm hiring.
Okay, you got a planning board, now you got a planning board vacancy. You want to do that one? Planning board vacancy.
You can do it, go. Gary, you can do it.
You can do it. Put it on you.
All right. Let's see, we're took, we're looking at planning board, and we're looking at an alternate vacancy. So, I'm going to nominate Chuck Heath to the alternate vacancy on planning board for a term, for a two-year term which expires in June 2015. That work for you, Lynn?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Reports and general comments from the town manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First item I wanted to just mention to council, that Chief Johnson has been chosen to serve on the North Carolina League of Municipalities Police Chiefs Advisory Committee. Chief Johnson is one of 10 police chiefs from the state of North Carolina selected for this committee, so I wanted to recognize him for that. Also, I recently received a letter of thanks from Linda Wood, the executive director of the Outer Banks Sporting Events, thanking the town for support of the recent Storm the Beach event. The Kitty Hawk Ocean Rescue provided their assistance on a voluntary basis for the setup and breakdown of the event. And the effort for the ocean rescue was spearheaded by Ocean Director Cole Gates. I always wanted to recognize them for their volunteering for that particular event. Also, received a compliment from Linda Barnhart of 4412 Seascape Drive about the work Public Works does around town. Mrs. Barnhart said that Public Works was checking the right-of-way for limbs, and they stopped and helped an 80-year-old neighbor of Mrs. Barnhart to remove a large limb. Mrs. Barnhart went on to say that aside from keeping the beach road and bypass looking great for visitors and locals, they also have a wonderful sense of community and helpfulness. Mrs. Barnhart thinks the, thinks the Kitty Hawk is the best community to live in. That's all I have right now. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Reports, general comments from the town attorney.
Don, I wanted to bring you up to date on the Wink's matter, and we have scheduled tomorrow for an arbitration hearing. And so, Joe and Ben and I will go over tomorrow morning, and we'll have that hearing before an attorney who's appointed as an arbitrator in District Court. And he will hear us, he will hear from the defendant, and he will... And he will hear us, he will hear from the defendant, and he will render a decision. The unfortunate thing is it's not binding on anyone. So if we prevail, the other side can go ahead and proceed with the hearing in District Court. If they were to prevail, we can go ahead and proceed with the hearing in District Court. But it gives the parties a hearing before the experienced legal individual and gives you some idea of what you might expect if you go forward with the hearing. So we'll do that tomorrow, and we'll report back what happens.
Okay.
It's not like when you and I went to Raleigh and...
No.
Because we got locked in a room and wouldn't be let out.
Yeah, Raleigh and Rocky Mountain.
Yeah, that's not the way this works.
Now, you went to a mediation.
Mediation.
Yeah. And he didn't tell me that was going to happen.
Nothing to eat.
It was getting late in the day, and I said, what's going on here? He said, well, we got to stay here until the judge turns us loose. And I went, if I'd known that, I wouldn't have gone to Raleigh.
He didn't turn us loose.
No, he didn't turn us loose.
Reports and general comments from the town council. Anything?
I'd just like to, once again, the manager just thanked the Ocean Rescue for Outer Banks Sporting Events and help on that race. They were really, they came to the rescue of the event, and I was elated, and they did a great job, and they need to be thanked. We appreciate what they did, and thank you, Chief, for helping orchestrate it, and the town.
Gary?
I do. These are comments for a house in a surf wash with an exposed septic tank, and I thought it was time that we brought to the public's attention some answers to questions they seem to have. Kitty Hawk Council members and town staff often receive questions pertaining to how a resident's home standing in the active surf zone with a partially exposed septic tank and creating a potential breach in the dune line can continue to exist. The issue is complex, but I will attempt to summarize the problems for a better understanding by the public. Town staff was asked to research specific questions, plus my own research is included. The very first thing that must be understood is that this council has no desire to condemn private property. That said, we do understand the danger posed to the larger segment of this community, and we'd like to find a solution. The most common question pertains to placement of a septic system within very close proximity to active surf. The town does not issue septic system permits. Dare County Health Department is the local permitting agency and follows state guidelines. The state rules require a site to have a minimum depth of 12 inches of usable, naturally-occurring soil with no unsuitable conditions, one of which is soil wetness. A site that meets the minimum can be filled with suitable fill material in order for it to meet the mean high-water mark setback. There are setback requirements for property lines, building foundation, and water line, to name a few. The Health Department does not care where the house or condo is located. If there is enough land to have a tank, drain field, drain field repair area, meet any required setbacks from the mean high-water mark, and have enough elevation and soil type that it will perk, the department issues a permit. The Health Department does not care if the septic tank is partially or fully exposed since the tank is fabricated to contain fluids and not allow external leakage. The Health Department follows state rules, requires a minimum setback of, following state rules, requires a minimum setback of 50 feet from mean high-water mark for an on-site conventional wastewater disposal system. What is mean high-water mark? North Carolina seems to have generally adopted what is known as the Borax Rule, which states that a mean high-water mark is an average of the heights of tidal waters over a period of 18.6 years. That length of time is required for the varying distances of Earth and Moon from Sun and each other to complete a cycle. Here I note, one of the frustrating things during research on this subject was the inability to determine when the last cycle was determined and how the mean high-water mark is calculated between cycles. The Coastal Area Management Act has no standards at all requiring setbacks from any tide mark for septic systems. A previous article in the Outer Banks Voice referring to 50 feet from low tide was incorrect. We checked. As to repetitive loss, recent rule change allows KAMA to treat a residence and its accompanying septic system as a single structure. Therefore, if damaged, the cost to repair a septic system and residence must exceed 50% of the value of the residence and septic system. So with all the above limitations, what would it take for a municipal entity to condemn a building? The NC Building Code states that an unsafe building can be condemned if a building shall appear to the inspector to be especially dangerous to life because of its liability to fire or because of bad condition of walls, overloaded floors, defective construction, decay, unsafe wiring or heating system, inadequate means of egress or other causes such as a health and safety issue from lack of a functioning septic system. Those conditions are not present in this case. In addition, the NC court has determined that a municipality cannot condemn property that is considered sighted on public trust areas. Those areas involve wet sand, dry sand, foreshore, and other issues. As for breaching the dune line for parking access, NC dot rules permit owner access from adjacent roadways. As you can now understand, the only viable option for town government in this case would be for the owner to voluntarily offer to sell a property, thus allowing removal and repair of beach and dune breach. I hope that helps illuminate some of the confusion around Pelican's Perch.
Didn't change the law, so it don't help us any. But it's good information. Good information. Okay. Public comment. Have any public left? They all left us.
Not all of them.
Y'all think you can jump, we're going to keep you here for a while. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Sit down.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.